Welcome to the Peak News. I'm Heim Goldman, the Watchman. You're listening to AM 1460 and FM 101.1 The Answer. Welcome to Government and Politics Tuesday, and this is the final day of our first year broadcasting. January 15th, 2024, we launched this crazy, scrappy, grassroots citizen journalist project here at Salem Media. And here we are, still sanding, or more literally sitting here in the booth and doing the show a year later. And that's a great accomplishment, and I thank you. I thank everybody who has come alongside this in any way, as a fan, as a citizen journalist, as a tech, as an intern. Our sponsors are wonderful. Thank you to all of our sponsors. Please patronize them and let them know that you found out about them or that you chose to patronize them because they support this project of the Peak to bring real journalism, media accountability to our region. And I thank you for listening in, and we're looking forward to our second year. We have so much in store. We think we've figured out a lot of stuff, still so much to do in a changing media landscape where people don't trust the news anymore, where budgets are being cut in huge ways. You know, and we walk around going, what is truth? And what are we to do? And how do we have a democracy? How do I even run my own life, my family, my business if I don't have good data? And how do we keep a community as lovely as Colorado Springs is if we don't report on the issues that are here and deal with them as a community? Those are all big questions, and the media is supposed to answer them. But here we sit trying to do that, and also calling the rest of the media to account. Why has this happened? Why have you, the big budget, our local news, whether it be broadcast or print, why have you allowed this to happen? Why have we gotten to the point where stories don't get told? And it's somewhat of a mess. It's not just national, it's local. And we'll continue to deal with that in a year or two. We say that we here at the Peak, we say the quiet stuff out loud, and we can say it much louder as we get more of you here. So we invite you to go on thepeak.news, that's our website, and look into being a citizen journalist if you have a story to tell. It might be investigative, maybe you're more toward feature. We really don't care at this point. We just want citizens to have their voice back, telling these stories and covering our area because we can all use accountability. We all need it. Well, I want to, before we introduce our guest and our co-host for the hour, a shout out to Springs Dentist and Dr. Craig Summer, Holistic Dentistry in Colorado Springs, our platinum sponsor, friends of ours, our family dentist. If you're into holistic dentistry, if you're into natural health, please check out Springs Dentist. And we launched, we'll talk about this later on in the program toward the end, but we launched a nonprofit this year also called the Peak News Educational Foundation in order to raise up a new generation of journalists, especially youth, and bring it into the high schools and teach ethical journalism. Well, we're having an event, a fundraiser event at the Pineri on January 30th. We invite you to come. Go to thepeak.news/events for all the information. We have great speakers, food tastings, and just a time for the community to get together and support what we're doing. So please check that out. Well, we have as our guest today, a commissioner from El Paso County, but actually a former commissioner from El Paso County as of a couple hours ago because the new county commissioners were sworn in today, and we're here conducting an exit interview. Private citizen Stan Vanderworth, welcome to the Peak.
Well, thank you so much for having me. First of all, I just want to thank you, Heim, for letting me come on the program here. And I appreciate the concept of being co-host. I didn't know I was promoted to co-host.
Well, you are. Yeah, well, as you can see, we do the headline segments together. You know, we came up with this concept when we launched a year ago of having the guest be more than just an interview guest and experiencing the different ways that we put news out there. So yes, we surprise your co-
And to your listeners, welcome to 2025, and also congratulations to the Peak for your one year of broadcasting. Good job.
Thank you very much. And please go and check out on our website, we have over 150 podcasts from our shows. You're sure to find people that you like, but we never had Stan on, but we thought, what a great day to do it because after eight years as a county commissioner here and great service in other ways, 40 years of public service, today he's a private citizen, and he always speaks freely pretty much, but now he can be completely unencumbered. So when we come back, we have different headlines that Stan and I are going to be talking about. Stan is going to be talking about repealing this Wolf Initiative, Wolf Reintroduction Initiative. He'll be sharing highlights from his eight years as a county commissioner. And we'll also be finishing off with some controversy about how things went during this election, this past election cycle, and how the media was selling lies. You're listening to the Peak. I'm Heim Goldman, the Watchman, and we'll be right back. Okay, so we have about a four-minute break.
Okay.
Have you had a chance to review that? Can we do the data breach thing?
We can do the data breach.
Okay, then hand it back to me so I can review it because I know nothing.
So there's two things I want to talk about after reviewing it. One is what the county does to protect and how much it costs us. That's important because it means billions of dollars spent around the country protecting ourselves from countries like China.
And does that include the schools? Does the county cover the schools?
Everybody has to defend themselves.
But I mean, does your-
No, the schools are their own costs. And the county, our IT budget and a big portion of it is counter cyber, is a big portion of it is cybersecurity, we spend $7 million a year just on that. That's as much as we put into our parks.
It just doesn't seem like it's possible with all the, I mean, just any computer with whatever the weakest link is.
Well, the part that I want to talk about is the fact that the federal government keeps as its exclusive purview any offensive operations against cyber attackers. The only thing we can do at the local level is just put up firewalls and defend ourselves. We have no other recourse. And it's, the nation needs a better approach than that.
Yeah, I'm concerned that, you know, China can flip the switch and shut down our, you know, that we've already been so infiltrated-
That's the concern.
Yeah, that when the time comes, you know, they can just shut everything down.
And I could spend hours just on that one topic after 428 years in the Air Force, but.
So, I mean, you consider yourself a cybersecurity expert?
Yeah, well, my last-
I can introduce you as-
You could do that because in my last assignment in the Air Force, I was running the Air Force, I ran the Air Force Program Office for Electronic Warfare and Cybersecurity Equipment Development. I was only one out of several, but I was one of them.
So, I mean, this is more of a formality story, but we have to say it. So the quicker we move on from this, the more time we can spend on the other two. But I guess just a congratulations to the new-
What I want to do is just congratulate Bill and Cory, also Carrie, because she was sworn in for another term. And just, I'll do-
You can throw Holly in too.
Yeah. Holly as well, yeah.
Well, I mean, whatever. I mean, you served with them, so you know, it's an opportunity.
Well, I want to thank, I want to, that's what the second part is. I want to thank all of the, everybody I served with. I want to thank the senior team of the county and the employees because they've done great. So I'll do all that.
Okay, and then we'll get into the, then we'll go to the burnout and then the breach. So if you see me hold up a finger or two, that's a time budget. I'm not asking you to stop. So if I like realize, you know what, I'm going to budget you two minutes for this, I'll do that and then basically in that area.
Okay.
So that's why-
Glad you got a clock over there.
That's why I do the clock. That's why I don't like, you know, phone interviews because there's no way to sort of non-verbally. Well, and also, you know, there's not the energy of being together. Really, really-
There is energy.
Really, really good radio, it's like you're in a coffee shop and there's people having an interesting conversation and you're listening in. It's voyeuristic, it's fly on the wall. Two people having an interesting conversation, maybe it's heated, maybe it's friendly, but it's, talk radio is voyeuristic because I'm getting to listen to people that are sort of enjoying each other, you know, but I'm learning from it. So the banter, and this is why we like never do a full show phone interview because I can't get the energy there. Okay, we're back in ten. Welcome back to the Peak News. I'm Heim Goldman, the Watchman. You're listening to AM 1460 and FM 101.1 The Answer. It is Government and Politics Tuesday today, and we have as our guest and co-host for the hour, former and just so former, like you can't even, you're just, the paint's still drying on that. Just a few hours ago, the new county commissioners in El Paso County were sworn in. And Stan Vanderworth, who is term limited after serving eight years, is out, but we have him here. And then we're doing an exit interview. And in this segment, our headline segment as we go into short format, we have, we're going to hit some headlines that are relevant to Stan and his expertise. And we're starting with, well, this news item, "El Paso County Elected Officials Take Oath of Office." So we have Cory Applegate and Bill Wyssong, and also Carrie Geithner, who has ran again. Michael Allen was also sworn in this morning. So Stan, I mean, this must sort of be a shock after, you know, eight years there that suddenly you're a private citizen now. But what do you have to say to the existing and incoming new county commissioners?
Well, thank you, Heim. Once again, great to be on your program. First of all, I just want to say those eight years went really, really fast. I felt like I got sworn in about two months ago, first time. But the fact that it went so fast, it meant that I really enjoyed the work, and I really, really did enjoy the work serving the citizens of El Paso County and really the state as well. It was an honor and it was wonderful to do it. I do want to thank-
And through COVID, which was-
And through COVID, in fact, I was chair of the board through the second half of COVID, and we had a lot of things to deal with about economic recovery in El Paso County, which we delivered here. And we had faster recovery in El Paso than anywhere else in the state. We actually grew our restaurant licensure during COVID in El Paso County, which is one of those amazing statistics. So I just want to thank all those people that run. I want to thank Bill Wyssong, Cory Applegate, Carrie Geithner, and Holly Williams there on the board, and also Kami Bremer on the board, those five commissioners. I want to particularly thank Bill Wyssong, that is now replacing me in County Commissioner District Three. It is not for the faint-hearted, but this is great work, serving the citizens of El Paso. The board that I sat on prior to the new people being sworn in, we did great work together. It was fun working together. I consider all these people my friends. I also want to just thank the employees of El Paso County, the senior leadership, and everybody in the county, from the snowplow, snowplow truck drivers to the public health people. Everybody has been doing great work, and we'll talk more about that later. But I want to thank all of them for their service to the citizens as well.
Now, is this your first elected office?
This is my first elected office, that's correct. Not my first public service. That was 28 years in the Air Force, first time as an elected office, yeah.
Okay, well, I want to get into the next article, which is very relevant. We have these city council elections coming up, and what we've found is three of the incumbents that we thought would run for a second term are choosing not to do so. Felrico and Michael Malley and Randy Helms have all decided to not do that, which is very, very strange. So we have, it's going to be seemingly all newcomers coming into that area. As someone who went through the full two terms, but we're seeing that, we're even seeing it up in the legislature in Denver of people that are opting out for different reasons. So I wanted to talk about, I guess we can call it public official burnout, what it's like to be a public official in Colorado, in El Paso County in Colorado, and what are the things that you have to consider, you know, to count the costs?
Well, I think it's very important that we all pay attention to this, and it's important to have some empathy for the people that run for public office because again, it's not for the faint-hearted. I would say for myself, I was in a really good position because in the last part of my time as a colonel in the Air Force, I commanded organizations, and that's like being an elected official in many respects. People are watching you to see how you behave. You're trying to take care of a bunch of people. You've got a mission that you've got to complete. You have only so much budget in order to get that mission done. So I actually had a lot of practice. So it was, I think it was fairly easy on me to continue serving, and I did not have any burnout. In fact, I just loved all of it. But for people that are new to it, or maybe people that need another job in order to have the revenue stream, in order to feed their family and pay their mortgage, it's a really hard thing to do both. So one of the challenges I think that we have with city council here is that they only get paid $6,000 a year.
And that's in the news too, that they're considering to do a pay raise of up to maybe even $40,000 a year. If people don't know the difference, it's about $500 a month that city council people get, and $120,000 a year that county, $10,000 a month that the county commissioners get. So the people on the city council do have to keep working, unless they have pensions or military pensions and are able to survive or have working spouses.
And no one should have any illusions about it just being a part-time job. If you want to do the job right, it's a full-time job. Everybody on city council, but all of us county commissioners took two, sat on at least 10 different boards, Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments, the Airport Advisory Board, it just goes on and on and on. So it's not just the city council meetings. There's so much behind all of that as well. And also Colorado Springs Utilities, they all sit on that board, and that's a multi-billion dollar operation not to be taken lightly. So there's an enormous amount of work being on city council or being a county commissioner.
But it's amazing that they work for $500 a month, and those in the legislature that spend four very intense months don't really get paid much either. So the question, you know, is, that's a consideration, you know, is it better where we, you know, where that is the case? So it doesn't become, let's say, a career, you know, that you can just make money and all over the place? Or is it stressful and so only maybe wealthy people come in? That's why we're getting a billionaire class into federal politics and things like that. You know, last thoughts on that as far as that balance?
Well, I definitely feel that city council does need to be paid a salary. I think it's important to allow a broader array of people to run for office because some people might have to step away from a job and then ensure that they can take care of their family. So it might be hard to do. The other thing that I think is very important is that these positions are for citizens, right? So we should have term limits everywhere. Fortunately, city council and El Paso County has term limits, but not every county in Colorado does.
So it can just go on forever. Okay, final article, profoundly troubling. This is from the Gazette, just from this morning, "El Paso County School District Victims of Nationwide Data Breach." It seems that D-49, D-11, and D-14, Mountain Two Springs, were among the school districts impacted by a nationwide cybersecurity incident that exposed personal information of students and staff. And this is through a software called Power School. So this is something I, that they subscribe to, but they were able to get certain information from them. So here we have another cybersecurity data breach. Stan, you're a cybersecurity expert. We're doing that in the Air Force, even at NORAD, I believe. So what is your position on this and how do we protect data when there's just so many places for it to get hacked?
Well, you know, this is a huge problem. This is a national issue, but also a local issue. And when you have countries like China doing cyber attacks all over the United States, and it's an asymmetric power move because a national entity can attack local government, and they are looking for personal information so they can possibly steal your assets from you. So this is really, really important. I don't think we're dealing with cybersecurity very effectively across the United States. We need the federal government to do more regarding this. And I just want you to know that in El Paso County, you know, we haven't been breached recently, but we spend millions of dollars protecting the private personal information of citizens in El Paso County. But every public agency has this challenge, and often we're left to our own devices and our own funding in order to provide that defense.
It says here, "Personal information of students and teachers, including addresses, medical information, family contact information was compromised by the hack. Social Security numbers and account passwords were not among the information as far as they know." Right? Like you should never really know when someone gets in there and robs your house, right?
In many cases, you know what you know, but you don't know, and you don't know what was there. Yeah, problem.
Well, you're listening to the Peak on Government and Politics Tuesday. We have former El Paso County Commissioner Stan Vanderworth retired just a couple hours ago as our new county commissioners were sworn in. We're doing an exit interview, and we're going to be learning, you know, what Stan's learned over the past eight years, what are his proudest accomplishments, and what's next. When we come back, Stan is on the forefront of wanting to repeal this reintroduction of wolves. And so he'll be talking about in the next segment, Wolf in Sheep's Clothing. You're listening to the Peak, and we'll be right back. Cool. Good. Good energy, good everything. So we have three and a half minutes on this break. Have your bullet points ready, and again, I'll give you a three, two, one, and 30 seconds to-
I saw this.
Turn you down. That's, yeah, that's a quickie. We don't do that here because wrapping it up isn't what you want at the end of a segment. You want a final chapter. So that's 30 seconds, but otherwise you'll see me do that just of, you know, land the plane.
Land the plane. I've done that, did that yesterday, actually.
That's how we click through stuff, or else, you know, we end up going, ah, we didn't get there, we didn't get to what we wanted to. So I like this format. The show keeps going.
Well, it's a good format if you share it with those that come on and tell them that you want to have some discipline and follow that format. People will follow along.
Yeah, we do send people, generally when there's time, we send people an email ahead of time and let them know about the different segments, but yeah.
We have to do it ad hoc a little bit.
Yeah, everybody's been able to, and I've even handed it over to when I've had actual guest hosts when I've not been here, and they're able to take it and just use the format. Because what I want to do is-
Probably been interviewed on radio 100 times in eight years, I mean, yeah, so.
Well, people tell me I'm more prepared, I'm more prepared for this than anybody else they've ever been on. I just like to do, I like to-
The good news, I would agree with. I don't know about more prepared, but you are very prepared. There's no question about that.
And what this does is it gives us a magazine format, so we can be all over the map, but it gives us a box to function in, so it doesn't feel like it's all over the map. There's a level of continuity, and also we cover a lot of topics.
Yeah, I think that's great.
And I think that that gives the guest more ways of showing their personality, more ways of, you know, you can talk about the headlines, you can do a monologue piece. It's all different formats because the standard interview of five minutes or 12 minutes of you come in, they're all the same. And it just, to me, it sounds like community radio, and it's like, yeah. So, okay.
All right.
Okay, so still a minute and a half.
Huge amount of time in broadcast terms, right?
It is. It is.
Same thing when I worked in the Pentagon. I would hold meetings with generals walking down the hallway on my way to other meetings.
It is, you learn, you learn, time slows down, and you learn when you're dealing with this format. And I still think that I'm talking very fast, but when you listen to it later, it just seems normal. It doesn't, because people adjust for the, they notice the changes in speed, but if you pick a certain pace, people just sort of, they tune into that and it doesn't seem like it's so fast. But when people talk slow, it's like, hey, you know, your time's going to run out. We're just going to have less content. So that's been, over the past couple of years here, has been just more how I control my voice and how I express myself in different ways because, especially if you're doing a commercial, most people can do maybe 70 to 80 words in a commercial. I can do 95, 100 by playing tricks and things like that. So practicing, yeah, practicing-
For time.
Voice, 10 seconds, we're back. Welcome back to the Peak News. I'm Heim Goldman, the Watchman. We are finishing off our first year on the air. I'm not sure what episode this is, but tomorrow is our first anniversary. We ask you to join us. We're going to have our regulars on, talking about what the past year has been and what we're planning to do. We've done a lot, but we want to do so much more. Saying the quiet stuff out loud isn't just us talking into a mic, but empowering you to say, you know what? I'm sick of this, you know, cancel culture and, you know, politically correct and whatever they called it over the past 30 years to shut us up. It's time for us to all exercise our voices, and I hope that you're inspired by me and our other hosts and our reporters and our guests, that you need to talk to your neighbors, you need to talk to your family. You need to talk. You need to talk because when we shut up, we lose that, we're not exercising our First Amendment rights. Well, who would have thought that putting apex predators back into the ecosystem would cause mayhem? Yes, we bring in the wolves back in, and of course, they're killing cattle and such. And people, you know, have thought it was a bad idea from the start. But Stan Vanderworth, our former county commissioner after a couple hours ago, is hot on the trail of wanting to repeal this, and so Stan's going to talk about, yeah, would they lie to you? A wolf in sheep's clothing. Stan Vanderworth.
Yeah, thank you again, Heim. Yeah, so, you know, having just stepped down on the board of county commissioners, I do have an interest in continuing to fight for free people and free markets and good economy in the state of Colorado. We've got some challenges with the state legislature and our current governor. And then we had this Wolf Reintroduction Bill that went to the citizens for a vote a couple of years back, and it's been nothing but an unmitigated disaster. Everybody's seen the newspaper articles on it. And it, you know, it only won by about half a percent of vote overwhelmingly along the front range, people voted for it. And then the people in rural Colorado, the ranchers, the ones that are trying to have a livelihood ranching, providing food for us so we can eat, they're the ones that are being harmed by this. Now, that bill includes a supposed reimbursement for losses of animals, but there's only been a few that have in fact actually been reimbursed, so that's not working well. And now, right now, the state of Colorado is $600 million short for this coming year. Some of the senators are talking publicly about maybe delaying the Wolf Reintroduction because it turned out to be a lot more expensive than what was originally envisioned. So it costs too much. It's a problem for ranching. It's, the people that voted for it really weren't impacted one way or another, and the people that were impacted overwhelmingly voted against it. So I'm a part of a team that's publicly going forward to go to a citizen ballot measure in 2026 to have that law repealed, and our ranchers and our citizens deserve this. We need to do this.
Why do you think it got voted in?
I think there was a lack of understanding about what the bill was actually envisioning. And then the people that were able to get this on the ballot, ended, they raised a lot of money. They were not necessarily people from Colorado. They were animal activists and environmentalists. And you know, the wolf that they introduced, the gray wolf, it's not even native to Colorado. It's the Mexican wolf that's native to Colorado. So we're introducing a wolf that's not even native in Colorado, and it's not even endangered. So there's maybe not a lot of gray wolves in the United States, but there's hundreds of thousands of them in Canada. So this is not an endangered species. This is not native to Colorado. It's harming our ranching and agriculture industries. And it's not so much just about the apex predator on killing a cow, but also when that happens, the rest of the herd gets very, very concerned, and then their birth rates go down. So there's more harm going on than just killing these animals. This needs to be repealed.
We have about 30 seconds left. What's the process?
So on the 17th, just a few days from now, I'll be appearing along with the team to the title board, and we're going to get a yes or a no to go forward. It should be pro forma. It's our belief that this will not be a problem. That will set the title, and then we'll be off and running to raise money and get signatures. We needed 125,000 signatures across the state, so we'll be pursuing about 200,000. We expect we'll get that, and once that happens, it'll be on the ballot, and the citizens will have another opportunity to vote.
Now, it will be on the ballot in 2026 because it can't come on during an off year.
That is correct.
Okay, so it's going to be time, and you'll have about six months to get the signatures once they okay it?
And that is also correct, about six months to get those signatures.
Okay, you know, I've learned some things sitting in those chairs. So what do you think about the wolves? Get ready because there may be a petition for you to sign to get it on there. When we come back with former county commissioner Stan Vanderworth, we're going to be talking about his eight years of service in our county. Cool. This is just two minutes. Okay?
Okay.
So again, authority, give your background so you can go back to your childhood or where you're from and do that and go through that, you know, with the people. Then what has it been like to serve in the county commissioner for years? What have you accomplished, and what's next?
Okay.
And you think, Betsy's your wife, that I can send you this electronically and she could maybe send it out to the Republican women or just let people know? This is, it's two weeks from Thursday, so it's going to be good. It's going to be a good one. It's been driving me a little crazy. Michael Goll, unfortunately, was going to speak, and he just had a conflict. And now I have Jason Jurgensen speaking, and Mike's going to be on video, but everybody else is on. Never run a nonprofit, so this is interesting. Got to throw a party to raise money. That's one of the-
Got to raise money.
Yeah, but doing a gala, you know, just, yeah.
But that's the way- But that's the way of the world, that's the market, I mean, that's something that I deeply support, should not be government action to solve community problems, it should be private action.
Okay, well, that's, you know, maybe putting that into your Q4 of the what's next with the. Welcome back to the Peak News, I'm Hyam Goldman, the Watchman, you're listening to AM 1460 and FM 101.1, The Answer, and it is Government and Politics Tuesday, and we have Stan VanderWorf, uh, former county commissioner as of two minutes ago, again, the paint is still drying on that, as our new county commissioners were sworn in, and, uh, Stan are doing an exit interview in this segment, uh, first, a quick shout out to our, one of our gold sponsors, Home Comfort Heating and Air, they're actually our HVAC, you know, my, my friends are who's supporting the show, and they have businesses, and this is what local community news is supposed to be, we have local news told by local people, supported by local businesses, this is the way it's supposed to be, not corporate, we all know each other, and we're, and we, and we all love where we live, um, so, Home Comfort Heating and Air, where if it's not okay, you don't pay, and, uh, reach out to Vern, he's a great guy, good friend, and, uh, we're having an event for our nonprofit that we're doing in order to help youth break into professional media with ethical journalism, and, and learning how, we have interns down here, uh, all the time, we have an intern on the board right now, Zach, saying hey to Zach there in the board, we have, we have young people running things down here at the Peak, and we're having this Taste of the Peak event on the 30th of January at the Pineri, please go to thepeak.news/events for more information and to get your tickets before it sells out. Well, again, we have Stan VanderWorf here, and, uh, a little background on Stan, 40 years in public service, El Paso County Commissioner for District 3, the past eight years, he was the chair for two of them, uh, he served on many local, state, and national boards, and continues to, 28 years in the Air Force, received a Bronze Star for his service in Iraq, retired as a Colonel, he's also a business owner in the fields of consulting and product development, and an avid skier, and private pilot, and someone I call my friend, Stan, thanks so much for being here, and congratulations on, uh, becoming a private citizen again.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Well, welcome back out here, we don't, we don't know where you'll be on Tuesdays, no, you could be, you could be almost anywhere, so, uh, give us, I gave some of your bio, but, uh, what should we know about you, where are you from, you know, originally, and, and how did you work your way up through this life that you've been living?
Well, thank you, you know, I was born in, uh, Western Illinois, but only lived there six months, and moved around a lot because my dad was a minister, uh, turns out that my family is a long line of ministers, so.
What denomination?
Uh, Presbyterian, so I like to joke every once in a while that someday I'm gonna have to go to seminary, just not, just to not break the line, but I don't want to be a pastor of a church or whatever, but, um, but I ended up moving to New Jersey, because my dad got a job in New York City, and I grew up in a town called Glen Rock, a wonderful little commuter town, uh, and made an enormous number of friends there, um, after that, went to Purdue University, got an industrial engineering degree, industrial engineering is kind of an important thing for me, because, uh, that's the scientific study about how to make processes efficient, it's something that I'm skilled at, and I'm good at, about how to run a thing and make it efficient, to make the dollars go further, well, that is a pretty good skill to have in public service, uh, so, I, uh, applied that, uh, in El Paso County, I applied that in my military service, and when we get into this, I'll talk a little bit about some of the things we were able to do in El Paso County without raising taxes and increasing service along the way.
Okay, and why'd you decide to run?
Uh, you know, I decided to run, that's a funny story, but, uh, it's basically, uh, when I was in the Air Force, I just found out I had an intense desire to serve, I love our country, I love our nation, I love the citizens, I love the Constitution, and I felt like I needed to serve to ensure that we stay a, a great nation, so I served the nation in the military, and then when I retired, I actually was kinda hunting around, what do I, how do I continue to serve, so I started volunteering for different nonprofits and got involved in that, but then an opportunity, uh, in a conversation with some friends, was, uh, well, maybe you should run for office, so, we got serious into that conversation, and there was a wide variety of choices, and eventually, we landed on county commissioner, and, uh, my timing was perfect, so I ran for office, and I was successful at that, and hit, now I've served two terms, a total of eight years as county commissioner, again, continuing to serve, so your question is why, it's to serve.
Okay, and you, and you did a senate run, it didn't work out?
I did a senate run, and it didn't work out, we'll talk a little bit about that, but I have to tell you that it's, it's hard to overcome $2 million in negative marketing against you that absolutely bought the airwaves, uh, and it was hard to break through that, uh, they were ridiculous comments that were made about me, we'll talk a little bit about
In the next segment, yeah.
In the next segment, uh, but I did do that, and I was not successful, but I'm gonna continue to move forward, because I believe very deeply in free people and free markets, it's what the nation's about, I'm gonna continue to fight for that.
So, what's, what was it like to serve the past eight years here in, in El Paso County as a commissioner?
Sure, well, you know, I loved it, I really had an enormous amount of fun, uh, and so much of it was fun, it wasn't fun every day, you know, we, we had some tough days, uh, a lot of that actually came from the state legislature sending us unfunded mandates, and us trying to figure out how to pay for something the state wants us to pay for, which by the way, was a way to end run tabor, they could write a bill, write a law, then make somebody else pay for it, make local government pay for it, and I found interesting friends, both Republicans and Democrats that were running local governments, were all mad at the state legislature for that, uh, and we were able to team up together and fight the state legislature, it's hard to overcome, uh, what the Democrats and the state legislature were trying to do, uh, all the time, all those unfunded mandates, but we did win some of those battles, that was part of actually what was fun, about fighting battles at the state and federal level, uh, on behalf of the citizens of Colorado.
How has El Paso County changed over the past eight years?
Well, I tell you, uh, El Paso County was in, was in a good place when I, when I was sworn in as a county commissioner, but it's an even better place today, I want to talk, I'll talk financial, just very briefly here, uh, with, again, without raising taxes, we recapitalized our road repair fleet, over 200 vehicles, we added county parks during the eight years, we increased our investment in our retirement fund, which is healthy for our citizens, it's not part of para, which is in a dire place, uh, the local retirement fund for our employees is in excellent shape, um, and, uh, the bond market, oh, and we also increased our emergency reserves immensely, so that if we have another big emergency here, a fire, whatever, we've got all the funds we need that we didn't have eight years ago, we got them all today to pay the overtime for the sheriff's office and whomever, in order to handle that emergency, we're in excellent, excellent financial shape, and the mark, bond market responded to that by giving El Paso County the highest bond rating that a public agency can receive, now, this is a lot of stuff that isn't really heard that often.
It's not too sexy.
Yeah, it's not the sexy stuff, but it's, it's great work that we did, and we achieved it by innovating, uh, and I knew that we would need to innovate, and we did innovate, we've got great employees that know how to innovate, and we unleashed them, and they found most of those answers, so we found money inside our budget to solve a lot of problems, um, and it's, I think it's ironic, after all the growth we've had in the last eight years, people moving into El Paso County, El Paso County today has less employees than it did eight years ago, and we used those funds to do things like recapitalize the road fleet, and that's, uh, improved, that's, uh, new snow piles, new road repair equipment and so forth, because it was breaking down and causing a productivity problem, and we fixed all of that.
Is there anything that you personally champion specifically that you're most proud about during your, your years?
Uh, frugality in finances, uh, making the dollars go.
Just sort of an overall.
Overall, overall government efficiency, efficient operations is, is what I championed, and then also, just fighting to make sure that government got out of the way to the best extent possible, got out of the way of people, and got out of the way of businesses, uh, we were able to achieve that at the local level, we had the lowest tax rates of any county in this, in, in the state, and then we fought battles when the, uh, state government kept trying to increase taxes, or, uh, send unfunded mandates down to local government, we fought all those battles as well.
So, what's next for you, I mean, this is, I, you know, I know it's just a, a few hours ago, that, that you're no longer a commissioner, but, but what are you looking towards?
Well, I do have my resume out in a couple of different places, um, a few of those are out for, uh, private industry, getting back into the defense market, uh, so there's a few along those lines, but I've also submitted my name for a political appointee position in the Trump administration, uh, that will be, you know, we'll see what happens in the next few months, I think it's a great resume with a lot of great background that could really help them, and it's kind of ironic, because my whole life, I've been working on how to make every dollar go farther, so this is a way to deliver that, so, um, I, I know how to do that, I might be able to do that for the Trump administration, I know I was doing it here in El Paso County, uh, and then, of course, the wolf reintroduction repeal, uh, and I've got my resume out in a couple of other, um, nonprofits that work in the political sphere, so I might find myself, uh, being highly engaged along those lines, so, we'll see, we'll see where I land.
Okay, but not, not city council run?
Not a, not a city council run, no.
Okay, so, um, we have about a minute or so left, what advice do you have for the county commissioners over the next couple of years, this new, this new body, constituted body, the new group, what do you think they're going to be looking at, and what challenges are they going to be, uh, experiencing?
You're right, well, they're gonna continue to be challenged by, uh, the state and the unfunded mandates, and they do need to continue to push back, um, so I would encourage them to do that, I think they will, uh, do that, the other thing that I thought was very important, um, and I responded to thousands of, of these, but constituents want their elected officials to listen to them, they want their elected officials to respond to their emails, their inquiries, their concerns, um, I had so much fun, I talked to thousands of citizens over eight years, responded to their emails, met with them for coffee, and sometimes I felt like I was their therapist, just kind of listening to their life, you know, their achievements and their worries, but it was really a pleasure, but I want to make a point here, the best ideas for government come from the citizens, so, it's so important that, that everybody that's in elected office listen to citizens, and then try to figure out how to, um, work what that interest is into something that fits your principles, but delivers better outcomes across whatever, you know, jurisdiction you're responsible for.
Okay, and if people want to get in touch with you, through Facebook, through X?
Yeah, they can get in touch with me through, uh, Facebook and X, I'll give my phone number and email address if people can just send an email.
If you want to put it out?
Yeah, I'm happy to put it out, it's in public domain anyway, it's, uh, s.vandorf@comcast.net, and also 719-640-8879.
Okay, so look, stand up and find out, he's not leaving, uh, he's here, he's still fighting for, uh, free people and free markets, I, I love that phrase, well, when we come back with Stan VanderWorf, former county commissioner, we're gonna be talking about this senate political race, and some controversy of how the media was, uh, being paid to spread lies, I'm Hyam Goldman, the Watchman, we'll be right back. So, I'll set some context for this, because, you know, because I work in this, in this field, uh, and so, you know, I, um, but I can't, I can't confirm or deny what you're claiming, I can just sort of set a context for how things tend to work, yes?
Jim, right, it is two minutes.
Okay, so we have an extra 30 seconds, okay, so I have to be out by 5:30, and what's it on?
It's on three-letter corporations, it's, uh, specifically.
Okay. You mean government agencies?
Yeah, government, yeah, three-letter, ATF is the main one, I don't even know what ATF is.
Alcohol, tobacco, and firearms, which is a very weird thing that Boebert is talking about wanting to do.
To get rid of.
To get rid of, why alcohol, tobacco, and firearms were all, I guess they were all contraband, they were all, you know, at the time when it was grouped, you know?
Yeah, we haven't even started on Second Amendment, I could talk hours just on that.
No, no, let's, yeah, let's.
President of Pike's Peak Firearms Coalition.
So, let's, let's talk about how we can do segments on that, you know, once you're on a show, I don't overall bring people back for a whole hour, um, but we can definitely do segment stuff, and, you know, pick up stuff along the way, that's my goal, is to have, that the citizens are reporting and, you know.
Or, you know, if you, um, you know, just coming along the way, if you'd just like, you know, send me an email and get a quote from me on topic, whatever, whatever.
Well, we don't, we don't have the means, like, really put reports together, so it's more people coming in and doing full reports, you know, four minutes, five minutes, but, but it's potential, we're asking bloggers to send us stuff, so if you're able to put some together at home, you know, if you have an audio, so if you're able, where you can come in and record it, you know, and then we can play, you don't necessarily have to be here live for doing a report, you know, our goal is, is, our goal is that that segment three and five are actually supposed to be citizen journalist reports, but we just haven't got there yet with people giving the content, I really thought a year ago, when I opened the gates and said, come do this thing, that I'd have people falling over themselves to get to the platform, but I think people just don't trust the media, and they've been shut up for so long, and.
Well, there may be a little bit of truth in that, but I'm gonna give you an alternative choice, uh, to contemplate, people are so busy trying to figure out how to make ends meet, or just have a desire in something, outdoor, sports, working hard.
They're blogging, they're, they're going on Facebook and talking, you know.
This is all true, but they don't see the time they invest in that, they see it as, it's right in front of me, I can do it right now, I don't have to go anywhere, uh, I think, um, I think we have a, a lot of our time consumed in things that are really not that valuable, and, um, and then when we come back to kind of the traditional ways of doing stuff, a lot of people don't see it.
Welcome back to the Peak News, I'm Hyam Goldman, the Watchman, you're listening to AM 1460 and FM 101.1, The Answer, and in this final segment, we're going to be talking about when the media sells political lies, now, I just want to set a context for this, we have Stan VanderWorf, former county commissioner as of a few moments, former as a few moments ago, finished up his eight, his eight years this morning when the new county commissioners were sworn in, but I had a conversation with Stan not too long ago about his political run for Colorado Senate, and all of the money, a lot of the out-of-state money that came in, um, I cannot substantiate any of these facts, we're gonna, Stan's gonna report on this, this is a story I think we're just going to start telling, uh, and one of the things we want to investigate, but I, I want to say, this is what happens, people come in, they pay for commercials, we here at Salem, people pay for commercials, we do not, um, you know, fact-check the commercials, you know, but, uh, as Stan will explain, there are laws, uh, in order to make sure that, that straight-out lies aren't told, and when he experienced that here, um, the media was not so quick to comply, I will just say, uh, your opponent did not buy any time here, and so this wasn't a Salem issue, I checked that out the next day to go, were we culpable in that, but, but Stan, you know, we have, we have a, a few minutes on this, um, please tell the story as you experienced it, running for, uh, state senate.
Yeah, so, thank you so much, uh, so, we were doing really well in our, uh, state senate run, this is senate district 12, uh, and then about 45 days out, uh, from the election day, uh, there was an enormous wave of negative advertising that was launched, uh, by a group called Altogether Colorado, you can find them on Tracer, um, this is actually, um, an independent expenditure commission arm of the Democrat Party, uh, they raised an enormous amount of money, they have one sole purpose, which is to get Democrats elected to the state senate, and the problem is, we need balance, uh, in our state legislature, and we were only one seat away from the Democrats having a supermajority in the state house, uh, in the state senate, excuse me, they already had a supermajority in the House, well, a supermajority is then veto-proof, and then, uh, you, you can have radical people, even vetoing Governor Polis, if he's, uh, you know, even Governor Polis will occasionally veto a bill that maybe is a little too radical, so, uh, this was a, a big issue, uh, it turns out, my senate race was the most expensive state senate race in Colorado history, this group, Altogether Colorado, spent about $2 million in negative campaigning, this was on television, on radio, multiple channels, this was on YouTube, and, uh, this was also on Google searching and, and other internet searches.
So, what, and so what were some of the things that were being claimed by, well, I guess, was it your opponent running the ads, or was it, it was a PAC?
So, this is, uh, the independent expenditure commissions by state law are not allowed to coordinate or interact with, uh, the candidates.
So, they did it for his benefit?
They did it for his benefit, that's correct.
So, what, what were some of the, the items that they were hitting on that you believe that are lies?
There were three or four, but I want to talk about the two main ones that were in every, uh, every one of the ads, the first one is that I took a million dollars in taxpayers' money, well, the problem is, they set it to look like I stole this money, or embezzled it, or something like that.
Or misappropriated it somehow.
Or misappropriated, but it was my salary, so my salary was $125,000 for eight years, it comes to a million dollars, so they made it look like I took, stole my salary, and I find it ironic, because it's actually the state legislature that sets the salary for county commissioners, and my opponent was in the state house, and he, he voted for my salary.
And what was the other one?
The other one was, uh, that I took sick leave away from El Paso County employees, and I never had a conversation with anybody about that, I always voted for the benefits package in all eight years, that's four hours of sick leave for every two-week pay period, it's a very nice benefits package for El Paso County employees, they said I took it from them, and I didn't do that.
Okay, so we have just about a minute left, what, what did you do in order to fight back, and what were the results?
So, uh, upon seeing these things, we knew that we needed to act, so, um, uh, using legal counsel, we sent a cease and desist order to the multiple radio and TV stations that were, uh, um, getting paid to send. to send out these ads, and we were ignored. Now, the problem is, there is a federal law about false marketing, and these, these news outlets and radio outlets, when confronted with marketing that is false, they need to stop you, they just need to stop the marketing. We couldn't get them to do that.
And so, this is a story, you know, Stan, when we were talking a short time ago, he said he wants to, he wants to get into this because he doesn't want it to happen again, and we know that. Just know, during the political times, the rates are set, it's when broadcasters make their, can make their whole year, especially in a big election year where there's a lot of money coming in, and it's only a few weeks, and then who's going to sue? So, ignoring letters like that to the bottom line of the business, it's business, but, but is it right? No, it doesn't seem to be, and this is a way to clean up the media. Well, Stan Vanderwerf, former county commissioner, thanks so much for being on the Peak.
Thank you. It was a pleasure, and look forward to hearing more about the Peak.
And now Jim Miller, just a guy in the Peak Rants. So, he's the everyman, so he's, he's getting...
He's the Peak Rant.
He's the Peak Rant, and he, and he has some, he's, he's getting a little bit of celebrity. People are, you know, liking, liking him as he speaks at that level. So, I just got like a two-minute close.
Okay. Oh, so we'll be back on in a second.
Well, you're, I say goodbye to you.
Okay.
So, if you need to go, you can go.
No, no, I'm good.
Just so much. It's good, I had J.W. Roth on yesterday.
Oh, how was that?
It was great. I really liked him. I really do.
He's a good guy.
I, I think so. I think he, he can, he's genuine.
I think he actually, I think is genuine when he says he wants to fix the noise issue.
Yeah. He has plenty of money. He doesn't need, like, he just, he employs like a thousand people. He, you know, it's just this thing, and he grew up here. He's fifth generation Colorado. He grew up here, so he's not somebody who wants to like, you know, come in and profiteer and ruin the place, and, and he does projects that help other businesses. They bring other things in. So, his, his contention is, you know, there's 50 people, and he doesn't like Dave, he doesn't like Dave Donaldson at all.
Well, yeah, but I can tell you though that, you know, what he needs to do, because I worked in electronic warfare...
We're still on Facebook, so whatever he said. Oh, I guess, I guess that...
No, I, no, I appreciate it.
I speak freely, but know that it's...
Well, I think it's, I think it's important to do this, and I'm happy to say this and have it recorded on Facebook, but being a former, being the former director of the electronic warfare programs, I know about energy propagation through free airspace. I did it in radars, but sound is the same thing. It's energy propagation through airspace. It is incredible how it travels. It can bounce off things you wouldn't expect, and it, so I think, I would recommend to JD or an independent organization to actually do some intense analysis, put those sensors up and find out how that sound is propagating to get to those residences or whatever is going on.
Because it's hitting certain places and not others.
It's hitting certain places, bouncing off walls, propagating in unusual ways, and you could build an enormous sound wall that, you know, is line of sight to where the residents are complaining and end up doing absolutely nothing because it's not going line of sight. It's going off of something else, so you really need those sensors to test...
Do you know him?
I do know, yeah.
Okay, call him, because he, he told me, we did a pre-interview, and he said he's about to spend $3 million on more sound mitigation. So, if you have something to add to that before, you may want to, you may want to give him a...
I'm thrilled that he's going to do that, and I just hope that the investment's not wasted.
Right, so you may want to, you may want to give him a ring.
You really need to, I'll do that. I'll do that.
Because he did say he's about to do that, so, okay. I'm just back for two minutes. Welcome back to the Peak, and we're finishing up our program here, our, our year, actually. We started on January 15th, 2024. Here we are on January 14th, so we made it. Can we rest? No, of course we can't rest. We can only get stronger, we can only do better, because we're just getting started here, saying the quiet stuff out loud, and we invite you to join us. Go to thepeak.news and figure out what we're, what we're about, where you can fit in. We want you to be able to share your voice. Maybe, you know, you want to be a reporter, maybe you want to be a tech, maybe you have a childhood, like to intern and break into journalism through here, maybe, hey, you know, you own a local business, and you would like to support what we're doing. We love our sponsors, it helps us do more. Whatever it is, let's do it together, because when the media is not functioning properly, well, then you have a society that isn't functioning properly, and, and we're, we're committed to do this, and I hope that you are too. And part of this is our nonprofit foundation, where we are gearing up to teach youth in our area journalistic ethics and media vocational training, plug them into an internship here, and we are having an event called Taste of the Peak. It's going to be an awesome evening, January 30th at the Pinery downtown. Go to thepeak.news/events to find out about our VIP speakers, about our vendors, all the wonderful things that are going to be going on that evening, and we're raising money for the foundation. Well, we are Monday through Thursday, 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. here on The Answer, and tomorrow we're having our first anniversary show. So, we're bringing the regulars back, talking about where we've been, sort of like Stan Vanderwerf was doing on the show today, where we've been and where we're going, and Thursday show's still up in the air, and that's the beauty of live radio too, but that's our media and education day. We'll let you know about that tomorrow. Stay tuned now for the Larry Elder Show, coming up next here on The Answer. Check out our 150-plus podcasts on thepeak.news. The Peak, we say the quiet stuff out loud, and in our second year, we're going to say it even louder for such a time as this. Thanks so much. Shut down the, shut down the recording devices here. Session for all. Come on.
Yeah. I...